One second, we'll go live on the YouTube. All right, you're all set.
Okay, planning, planning board is now in session. It's Monday, April 26th. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 3818 and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number, limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website at www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so in the following manner, again, www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No person, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Selpro's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. First item on the agenda is a discussion item, master plan committee update. That would be Mimi.
Thank you. Good evening. The master plan committee is next meeting on May 5. And our goals and recommendations are on the planning board website. Are there? Do any planning board members have any comments or?
Mimi, I read through them and a lot of the goals are really great goals. I think they're achievable and they seem to make, you know, I haven't been attending the master plan committee meetings, but Sarah has and seeing the culmination of the goals that you posted there. From what I know in my four years here, they seem very like on target, on track from a fresh set of eyes looking at them.
Thank you. Glad to hear that.
But we're You've been chugging away for months and months with this and staying, you know, having a steady flow of meetings. Do you anticipate when you might be at the end?
Well, so we're writing the chapters now. So we're getting to the end. It depends on how quickly we can get. So we're doing that ourselves. So it's how quickly we can get volunteers to follow through and and finish their chapters.
So at least several more months.
Well, I hope not several more months, but a few more months.
Good. That's great. Anything else?
That's all I have. Does anyone else have anything, any comment for me?
No, Mimi, I'm sorry. It was on my list of to-dos. I know you asked for that the last meeting, so I will try to look, look at that.
I will ask you again next meeting.
So Mimi, you're looking for the planning board members to review those listed goals and just provide any comments or?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're on track with what this board envisions as goals and recommendations moving forward for the town.
And I also like to point out that in our planning budget, we allocated a small amount to be used for the master plan committee. And one of the targets for that is potentially some assistance from NA PC to update some of the charts and the demographic information. So that may be in the works too.
Yes, thank you. Sarah sent out the call for the list of data. Thank you, Sarah. That's all I have.
Very good. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is continued public hearing for town meeting warrant article amend section 174-10 site plan approval. This has been continued from February 22, March 8, March 29 and April 12. This would be Mrs. Latrell again.
So at the last meeting, well, first to back up a little bit, when this was discussed with the board of selectmen, there were questions from a couple of members on the removal of the constructive approval sentence from the, from the site plan review, when there was concern about that in that the applicant would have would be at a disadvantage if the planning board failed to act. So I looked at 10 other towns that were of similar size and in this general area and all of them except for one, which was Harvard had constructive approval. So and the reason that we removed that was at the advice of town council, thought it was a disadvantage for the planning board to leave that in. So we can do either way because site plan is not part of chapter 48. So the town can pretty much do whatever they want. I don't know how much of a fight this will be on town meeting floor or it's up to the board what, what they would like to do. Right now with the constructive approval is not in the warrant that's going to be printed for town meeting.
So I have a question. So maybe if, if we were to strike constructive approval and the pale and in some future, this planning board, I don't think would be in this situation, but some planning board someday may not act in a timely fashion, quote unquote. So how does that work exactly? What happens if there is no construction or constructive approval based on a timeframe?
So that was the question raised. The, the bylaw now says the planning board shall act within 90 days. Whether that has any legal consequence or not, I'm not quite sure. I'm not an attorney. It was debated whether, whether the planning board didn't act if that was appealable or not. So I'm, I'm not quite sure.
I did speak with Aldo briefly after sending him an email with some additional information that Mimi researched and you know, he did confirm that he still recommends in the planning board's interest that you strike the constructive approval language. He referred to the possibility and I, you know, it was a very short conversation on this, but that an applicant can appeal regardless at, at that point and that, you know, when you have a staff who assists in getting those extension requests from the applicants to move forward on the planning board's grant to extend the action dates, that it's been a way that has really worked. The downside with constructive approval. And again, you know, Andrew Dennington and Sam Stivers, I believe, were referencing that the applicant doesn't have like a, like a a fail-safe end date that like a backstop for the application process, but that's really not the case because if you have 60 days for site plan or 90 days, whatever, we have 60 days that when that time comes up, they don't have to say we're going to extend, we're not going to request an extension. At that point, the planning board can deny a site plan if the plans are not complete, right? So you can't act on an incomplete application. So if there's something missing that doesn't show that the project is constructible in the eyes of the planning board, you could deny, and then that gets appealed, just like you could approve with conditions. And again, I'm no attorney either, but you know, town council still did opine that he recommends striking it, but he said ultimately it's up to the planning board and then the people at town meeting on which approach they feel is best.
Dawn.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but was there one instance many years ago when an applicant tried to say constructive approval was given because there was a filing error? Is that, was that with the planning board or was that with the ZBA? Or another board, I should say. I don't, I thought there was an issue back with EMC or something when something didn't get filed appropriately once. And the applicant then tried to say, even though the, the board was trying to continue it, that since this filing didn't happen, it's been constructively approved and they weren't going to show up at any more meetings and try to strong arm the town to say, well, it was constructively approved because there was a filing error. So in, in that instance, I'm kind of very much leaning towards not having any constructive approval at all. But there would be a need to act. That's me personally. So.
I would tend to agree with that. You're, you're right, Andrew. There was an issue with EMC several years ago. I don't remember all the details, but I know that the matter got resolved outside of the planning board. Town council and EMC's council somehow negotiated a resolution. I forget what it was, but it was it was not very popular with the planning board because EMC, in my opinion, didn't want to deal with the planning board because of our insistence on, you know, detail like we do with every site plan. And they didn't want to deal with us, so they found a way to kind of get rid of us and as a result, town council intervened and got the matter resolved, which I, I think the board was upset that the process should go through the planning board and yet it, at the end it did not. And it was, it was not a friendly interaction at all, the board and EMC. It wasn't very pleasant.
So again, from, from that standpoint, that it could like constructive approval, if there could be a misfiling or something like that, could someone could interpret it that they, oh, I'm good to go. I, I would want to have that there's a clear decision one way or another without, and I'm in favor of getting rid of the constructive approval.
So Mimi, you said that it's not that the 90 days has been removed from what's being proposed?
The constructive approval.
That's not in the current proposed warrant article.
Correct.
So if those who think it should be the constructive approval should stay in there, it would have to be added back in at town meeting.
Have to be an amendment, correct.
The question would be, is the amendment to add it back in allowed because what's being proposed is, you know, one thing and we're adding something else to it, which makes it more, you know, more than what's being proposed.
Well, Dawn, does that, does that count also if that sentence is in the bylaw right now? So if you're going to strike it, that's the change. It's still there. So if you say, we're not going to strike it, you're not removing. It's, it's there.
Right. The, the, the warrant article would have to fail in order to keep it. In order to keep the constructive approval, the whole, the whole warrant article would have to fail.
Well, you couldn't amend that on the floor since it's already in there. You say we amend to keep that sentence.
I, I think you could.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I, I think you could, you know, amend it to say that you're going to keep that sentence in because it's already there. And also you're, you're broadening the applicability rather than narrowing it in. My understanding is that you can't amend something to make it less, you know, more restrictive, but you can make it less restrictive. And I think that that would be how it would be perceived. And especially since it's already in the current language, I think it would be something that you could amend.
Well, the planning board might consider adding, keeping it, adding it back into the proposed article as being more restrictive. I suppose we need to
What side you look at?
I, I suppose we need to maybe get some read from town council as to what the various options are and how to proceed in order to either keep it or not keep it and preserve the article.
In the context of preserving the article or because you know, he's opined three times that he believes it should stay in there. In, you mean in the, in terms of if the flexibility of the warrant article through amendment on the town floor?
Right. Go ahead, Mimi.
Could, could we also find, find out definitively if the planning board's failure to act is appealable? So, so if there would be some legal recourse for an applicant, if the planning board failed to act?
Yeah, I don't think we've asked town council that. I know one of the selectmen said that you can't appeal, you can only appeal an action. And if the planning board takes no action, then there's nothing to appeal. Which leaves the proponent just floating out there in the, in, in, in the air. So.
Right. Well, that was
But we never really asked, yeah, we didn't ask town council if our inaction can be, if the planning board can be sued for inaction.
So Dawn, I mean, it looks, and I'm not a disciplined attorney, but if, if the bylaw states that the planning board shall act and if we don't act, then we're not in compliance with our own bylaw.
That's the question.
So if we're out of compliance with the, with the, if the planning board, we're out of compliance with the bylaw, that to me would be an appealable. Well, I guess we'll leave it to town council.
Well, what's happened in the past when there was a constructive approval that had the planning board acted? Was that a denial? Or was it a constructive approval? I mean, I know you can't go into detail, but you know, I, yeah, town council.
So Sarah and Karina, are you clear on what new questions we were going to have for Aldo?
Yes, yes. Just to recap, number one, the flexibility of amending on the town floor, whether unstriking the sentence that removes constructive approval is doable. And it doesn't cause the whole warrant article to fail. And then B, is there appeal process if the planning board does not act? Is that right? Is that the gist of it?
Yes. And that goes right to what I think Marty Healy was saying that can't appeal, you can only appeal an action. And if there's no action, then there's no, there's no pathway to to appeal it. To sue, I don't know.
Just a, just sort of a little bit of an update. I was at the board of selectmen meeting on the 20th and this, you know, did come up and, you know, in general, the board of selectmen are, are in support of, of all the changes. You know, and, but they are obviously concerned about this constructive approval piece, but basically said that they are in support of it if that goes back in. So just so that everybody has that.
Actually, it does say in paragraph F that if, if the actions permitted are not exercised or the approval is not extended, they shall lapse. And a new application notice and hearing will be required. So actually that does answer it. They, if, if the planning board doesn't act, the applicant has to file a new application. Which personally, I, I'm actually fine with paragraph F as it is, if in that case with this, with the constructive appeal stricken.
Jesse, I think what you're referring to is the actions allowed by the major site plan approval are authorized for one year period from the date of grant. Is that where you're reading from?
Yes.
That's when a decision has been filed, then the applicant has one year to start his
Got it. Okay, sorry.
No, it made sense for a minute there. I was saying, hey, where's that? That sounded good.
I got you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Just one other quick point. It should be noted that the danger of constructive approval is that a site plan that isn't ready for prime time moves forward and be, you know, pose a danger to neighborhoods or to the town in general with, which that's the flip side of the constructive approval, that you don't want something that hasn't been fully embedded moving forward in putting people at risk.
Yeah. And I think that's the direction that Aldo's coming from is, yeah, it's not perfect, but it's a better situation than having constructive. Protects the town and the planning board more than, than it, than it without it. Anything else? We'll move on. Anyone from the public?
We have six attendees, but no one has their hand raised for this item.
Chair, I make a motion. We continue the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article amend section 174-10 site plan approval to May 10, 2021 at 7:05 PM.
Second it. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor? Morris, yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, town meeting warrant article amend section 174-9 special permit requirements, 174-19 extensions or alterations. This public hearing is continued from February 22, March 8, March 29 and April 12. This is a ZBA sponsored article. Anyone planning to speak to this? Questions, comments?
Same six attendees, Sarah, right?
Same six. No hands raised at the moment. No.
Any questions, comments from the board?
I'm here. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to continue the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article amend section 174-9 special permit requirements, 174-19 extensions and alterations to May 10, 2020 at 7:10 PM.
Second. 2021.
Oh, 2021. Sorry. Yes. Thanks for the correction.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor? Morris, yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
I guess after the last year, it kind of doesn't matter whether it's 2020 or 21. It's just a continuation. Next item on the agenda is continued public hearing, town meeting warrant article, update section 174-12.1 Outdoor Illumination. Can this public hearing is continued from February 22, March 8, March 29 and April 12. This would be Mrs. Houlihan.
Thank you. So Sarah, Destin and I had the opportunity to attend the board of selectmen meeting where they were discussing these warrant articles. There was a quite a big discussion. Oh, you know what? Before I say that, I think there was a meeting on April 14th of the board of selectmen, just as a way of update. And there was a conversation regarding the lighting bylaw and Mr. Healy made some comments, concerns regarding the language around kind of a couple of things. The, the applicability of the bylaw and being very clear and what that, what that may mean and how some of the wording in our language may not be modified correctly in the way that it's written. He also had a concern expressed on the enforcement. I think there was quite a bit of conversation around the enforcement and really try to understand the process. And then the third was a concern around the non-conforming replacements and the worry that the lighting illumination would affect the fields like Choate that had a major investment associated with them and that there is no grandfathering act in here. There's a request for non-conforming to, to, to move at a certain point in their lifespan, either 50% of all fixture failure or when the light was vandalized, broken or needed replacement for whatever reason that they were to replace it in compliance with this new illumination bylaw. So that prompted a rather specific email from me to Mr. Healy. I think that's in our Dropbox. And then we were extended an invite to attend the board of selectmen meeting the following week. So that's when Sarah, myself and Destin attended and we had a very upfront conversation with Mr. Healy around what the requirements would be around language change. So there was a request to change the language, recognizing applicability and to, to modify the language in the applicability section. As he, as he made the comment, it's, no one wants a lawyer until you need a lawyer. And I think he reads it from a lawyer perspective. And I, I think that was helpful feedback for us. So we've taken that into consideration. And then in, with regard to the Choate field, I made a statement that I would find that information out, whether there would be an egregious expense to the town if the Choate field was not in compliance. So in speaking with Karina and Sarah, we would be able to go back to Moscow, not Moscow, Moscow lighting to have them help us understand what would be the requirements should their failure, their light fail or they hit the non-conformity point in their lifespan, what that would mean to the town. So based on that conversation and the back and forth between the board of selectmen and us, they did take a vote and they voted unanimously to support this at town meeting.
With, Sarah, with those changes. To the applicability language. And so I, I definitely want to make sure that this is legally sound in terms of how it's written. But I do think that there is still an inherent conflict between the current interpretation of applicability. And if, you know, we the current interpretation of applicability. And if, you know, we can learn anything from this, you know, year and a half long process, I, I would hope that we would be able to come to a consensus across the boards and across the departments about current applicability. Um, and, you know, perhaps, you know, having, um, you know, a, an outside council review this particular bylaw may be, um, you know, a, a good fit at this point. So I just kind of wanted to put that idea out. It's something I, you know, put out to the working group, um, just because, you know, I think that there still is kind of some, some inherent, um, struggle there. And it would be great if we could at least come out of this with, with all being on the same, uh, understanding.
So are you specifically referencing the applicability to single and two-family?
Correct. So, yes. And so, you know, um, just to reiterate, you know, for, for folks who may have not, you know, seen some of those, uh, past meetings, uh, town council did opine twice, um, about the current applicability to single and two-family residential homes. However, um, you know, the building department, it does not interpret it the same way. Um, and right now, you know, the sense that I got from the Board of Selectmen meeting is that they are more in support of, of the building department's interpretation than the town council's interpretation at this point, um, and kind of referencing that this would be an additional enforcement piece, and this would cause additional strain to the department. And I, I completely understand that the department needs additional resources in general, and I'm not, you know, as a staff person trying to put undue burden on another department. And so I'm very sensitive to that and I understand that. However, I do also believe that it is currently applicable to single and two-family homes and that we are not broadening the applicability. So I just, you know.
In the existing bylaw, the bylaw as it is written today, right?
Correct. And so, so again, like that we, that the new proposed bylaw does not, you know, broaden that, that scope.
And Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, there was another, the, the modified language was around, um, the worry was if this is signed into law, that everybody would need to go out and change their lights right away. And the way that that language would need to be changed to be able to make sure that it's no, that's not actually accurate. When your fixture or your non-conforming, um, circumstance, whether it's vandalized, broken, um, destroyed for whatever reason, or more than 50% of your property. So if it's a large industrial place and 50% or more of the fixtures go out that need replacement, at that point, that would require replacement. So there's some modified language there. So there's components of it that I do think would be helpful if we have budget for, um, uh, an external legal review, um, with someone with this expertise to be able to kind of understand and interpret this. Um, and I think the Board of Selectmen recognized that it does need to be enforced. And I think that they recognize there is a process. There's a complaint form right now. Um, we do not believe that complaints will increase, but I think they would like to understand what the impact will be and what the enforcement process, which we all recognize is not a planning board responsibility, um, that they need to actually help figure that out, um, on the backend. And, and hopefully that's where we'll be able to figure out exactly how this is enforced.
Marnie, do you think that, um, in talking and working with Destin for a while now, that when it comes to applicability to residential, that it's not necessarily a fixture change, it's changing your light bulb, it's changing the bulb in the fixture, whereas commercial applications, it may be a fixture and, you know, which holds a certain type of bulb, because the fixtures that commercial properties use are commercial type lighting. Whereas if you're a private um, residence, um, on your property, uh, it could just simply be you have, uh, a fixture and it just means changing the bulb to be compliant.
And that's the hope. And at the end of the day, we don't expect any building inspector to go knocking on anybody's door because they haven't changed their 120 watt to a 60 watt. Like, that's just not the intent of this bylaw. The, the intent of the bylaw is really to respect the Dark Skies Initiative and protect our environment. And I think that from a residential perspective, it's the, it will be a request to comply with the bylaw, but the reality is that there isn't going, you, there's, there's going to be impossible ways to enforce that and we recognize that. But we do think that it's an important approach for us to be trailblazing and leading efforts to protect our environment with the Dark Skies Initiative. And I think we've done a really great job leveraging Destin and Sarah to be able to get to this point. I think, you know, if there's a way that we can fully get to agreement and collaborate, that the, the really telling and good sign was the Board of Selectmen had agreed with, you know, assuming we make some of those changes, uh, with regard to, um, applicability and, uh, just the way that non-compliance is enforced, um, not enforced, but, but it's not immediate as soon as the bylaw is, is signed into action.
And in fact, that the current bylaws applicability, which according to town council applies to pri- private, single family, two-family, um, I, I think I've had one incident of a lighting complaint between residents and the town in the four years I've been here. And that applicability is not what is proposing to be changed in the new bylaw.
Correct. Yes. We are not changing applicability at all. I don't know if the board has any questions.
I just have a comment, not a question. Um, to me, I think it's the compliance with the bylaw will be less of an enforcement issue and more of an education issue. I think when people realize the benefits of dark sky compliance and how blue light is, um, detrimental to people's health, detrimental to the environment, and those, and bright lights are less safe. They blind people. So you can't see if there's any danger around the corner, that people will, um, voluntarily, you know, switch out their bulbs when they burn out or whatever. So I think it's more of an education. I can't imagine, as of, you know, Karina mentioned, now there aren't millions of lighting complaints, and I'm sure that there are a lot of lights that are not in compliance with our current bylaw. So I don't see that enforcement is really going to be an issue, but I think that, um, education will bring the compliance with the bylaw.
And I believe Sarah created a, a frequently asked question sheet. And it's on the town website, on the planning board website, it's, Sarah.
Yeah. Our intent is to do a little bit more of the circulating before town meeting and do some of that education awareness and really think about how the best way is to do this, um, and, and get outreach and communication to, um, the neighborhoods.
Including you've been invited to the advisory meeting on May 5th.
6:30. That's correct. Yes. Andrew extended that. Um, Kathy and Andrew, Andrew Dennington invited us to the advisory meeting, 6:30 PM on May 5th. We'll be talking as.
Well, if I could say, um, I agree, Mimi, your, um, emphasis on, um, education, uh, is, is a very positive way to, to look at this. But I wouldn't necessarily say that, um, the enforcement of may go up. And the reason for that is because there's so mu- so much non-compliance. I mean, there were site plans that we approved just recently. And they, they've already exceeded, uh, what we approved for lighting. It's, it's, uh, it seems to just be, they, you know, s- certain, uh, commercial facilities, they just feel like, seems like they just do whatever they want. So I would hope that the enforcement would go up a little bit and bring some of these facilities into compliance with what was approved. And then going over to, um, what Karina was saying about, you know, sometimes you just have to change the light bulb, to get it into compliance. And there's even situations where you don't have to change anything other than the, the angle of the, of the fixture. You know, the fixture is pointing too far outward and you, all you have to do is adjust it downward to just light up the immediate area, area. And that's, that's probably all you have to do. So it's, it, I agree. It's, it's, there's multiple ways of being in non-compliance in multiple ways. Some of them simple to get into full compliance. Any other questions or comments?
Jesse had his hand raised. I don't know.
I did. Uh, Marnia, I apologize if, uh, I didn't catch this in your explanation. But, um, Marty had asked if you had spoken to the, um, the chief zoning enforcement officer, building inspector. Um, did you, I apologize if you did address this, but I didn't catch it.
I've never spoken to her.
So, um, early on, myself and Destin, uh, met with the, uh, building commissioner and the facilities director. Uh, this was again, you know, back when we, we started this whole thing, um, in the before times. And, you know, uh, you know, she did say that she, um, did not have the same interpretation of applicability. Uh, she felt as though lighting was only applicable to, uh, site plan and those sort of commercial facilities and that it did not apply to single family, uh, and two-family residential homes. And of course, you know, again, she's already kind of pushed to the max in terms of her workload personally. And so, you know, the, the enforcement did come up and, and she expressed concerns with not having the capacity or the resources um, to enforce this type of thing, if it did, um, kind of create a lot more, um, complaints.
And that also, um, reoccurred recently, um, in a conversation planning had with, uh, Lori LaBolle as well. She still had the same, uh, impression and feeling about that. And I do agree that that's an extremely, um, task department. And I believe that, um, they're going to be one person short-staffed in the near future until they replace somebody there. So, um, I, I understand where she's coming from, but it is true. There's an interpretation of that site plan applies to site plan in, in, um, the building departments review or idea of it.
She actually addressed a, a neighbor complaint in this with a letter from the building inspector that stated the applicability did not apply to single or two-family homes. That person did not appeal that decision. So right now that's the decision. And I've been, uh, uh, understanding from, um, Chairman Healy that Aldo's, um, opinion is just that. It's an opinion and a recommendation. So I think there's just something that needs to happen on, on the town front to be able to come to a collaborative understanding of what is the enforcement.
So as Sarah asked, do you think that, um, then we should pursue, um, consulting an additional or a different attorney independent of the town, um, maybe a small contract? If we, um, have budget available? Um, I don't know if, if, you know, it, it's a, it's a, it's a tricky place to be, um, because we have opinion from town council who we rely on and, um, we're not asking someone to draft a bylaw. We're asking someone to opine as well. So is that what, is that something the planning board wants us to pursue or do we hold?
So that's one of my favorite topics, as this planning board knows, is can the planning board go get an independent decision? I think we have to request it, right?
Yes. Selectmen have to approve, we have to request through the selectmen for, uh, uh, additional counsel.
I think it's a worthy request. And I, I, my hope is that Board of Selectmen would agree. So I think if there's budget, I would like to ask my fellow planning boards to have a legal opinion on this by, by, in bylaw.
Motion?
Can it be a motion, Don?
It, yeah, it should be because, um, because, uh, they're in separate counsel, uh, is, at least in recent history, has been a, um, much talked about and not very happy ending, uh, result for the planning board. Especially, and, and, you know, that was related to the, uh, Park Central, uh, project, but, um, we have seen other boards have independent counsel uh, to help them. I know that, uh, when we were requesting it, uh, independent counsel, separate counsel, uh, the planning board for the site plan, uh, for Park Central, um, if, if our, if that was granted and our independent lawyer disagreed with town council, then what? What do you do? That was, that was what, what we were, um, asked.
And that could happen here, right?
It could. It could happen here, but it also could, um, and our, our feeling back then, and I think throughout any of similar situations would be that, um, we get an opinion from town council, which we always, um, respect. And if we get a, 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 a different opinion from an, another lawyer, then it wouldn't just be, I disagree. It would be, this is the way I look at it. And we would all learn from that. And we would, we would, um, take, take the reasons for Aldo's opinion, compare that to the other lawyer's opinion and make our own decision as to whether or not, um, which direction we would, would want to go in. And, and we would share that with the public. And so that when they vote, they could, uh, have an informed vote, um, based on the opinions of the two counsel. So it's, it, it should be looked at as a positive thing if we had a, a separate, uh, view, viewpoint from an, another lawyer. But there's also, um, you know, the, the, some, someone might say, well, if you need a lawyer to, uh, interpret your, uh, code, your bylaw, then you've got to do a better job of writing it. Shouldn't have to have a lawyer to, uh, interpret it. Somebody may say that. I, you know. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a comment. So I think the, the, our request would be for the attorney to actually help clarify the language, because I think Mr. Healy was reading it from a lawyer perspective, and I think he identified two things that he'd want to augment. I think the advice from Aldo was advice and the, you know, suggestion of stronger language, which we've incorporated. Um, and he's, he's fine with that language. So I think that the, the request would be to have an attorney provide language that would help satisfy Mr. Healy's concerns as an attorney, but not necessarily interpret the bylaw, but just to make it clear. Is that, is that, Sarah? Sorry. I saw your hand up.
I'm just thinking that maybe the request is twofold, right? Because you have an existing bylaw that infers, it doesn't outright say, but infers that there is applicability to single and two-family residential homes. So if this new bylaw revision doesn't pass, you, you're still left with your existing code. And there is a, you know, two different interpretations of the existing code. And so I think that that is probably what's most troubling to me is that, you know, Aldo has opined that the existing code does, you know, cover single and two-family homes. Um, and then we have an interpretation that it does not. And so, you know, that, that leaves everybody sort of nowhere, you know, um, so.
So the, the concern I have with requesting special counsel in, with, with that, with the experience that we had with Park Central was we really needed a demonstrable conflict. Like what, wha- what is, what is the conflict of, uh, you know, submitting this to Aldo for review, other than we got a different answer from a selectman? I don't know if that qualifies of, of, for, for a conflict of interest for town council.
So I guess the question would be, it's not a conflict, but it's an area of specialty. So if you have someone with, um, perspective that can look at this lighting bylaw from an applicability and the other point, that modified language that, that Mr. Healy wants to look at, we can also ask Aldo to do that too. But I think Aldo will come back. we can also ask Aldo to do that too. But I think Aldo will come back three times. And maybe with one other amendment. So I, I don't, actually, I don't know how to answer your question, Jesse. I think it's, we have good questions. I don't think there is a conflict of interest with Aldo's. We don't.
Right. So, I mean, I, I certainly want the best for this bylaw because I think it's important. But I, I don't think seeking outside counsel like fits, this doesn't really fit that criteria to me. I can see resubmitting it to town council for that. And, and if he comes back and says, well, I can't do this for some reason, or, you know, I'm unwilling or unable to perform this duty, that would be something to go to the Board of Selectmen and say, we need special counsel, but then we have to follow the steps.
So I guess my question is, how do we resolve the conflict in interpretation?
Of the current bylaw?
Well, we don't. Our focus is to have the townspeople approve, vote to accept the new one. And the proposed outdoor illumination, that's our focus right now. Whether the old one gets replaced by the new one, or if we're stuck with the old one, after town meeting, we can it would probably be our job to try to get clarity on, on what we're stuck with. And if town meeting passes, we don't have to worry about it.
So then is the, then we send this back to Aldo with modification on the language that Mr. Healy suggested around the not, you know, not immediately have to replace everything. And then the, how to write that applicability so it's clearer.
Yes.
But they weren't in disagreement. Board of Selectmen was not in disagreement that it should apply to everybody in the town of South Borough, as well as the industrial and commercial properties. So I think it's just the language that we have in the bylaw, that the way it reads. So I just think we have to, we need clarity.
Focusing on the non, the enforcement side of it, Marnie, the who becomes non-compliant? Are you saying that's what they lean towards?
So there is a modified language in that non-compliance piece.
Unless or until.
Unless and until is what we would add.
Right to the applicability.
That's. Bylaw, top of page two.
Section B, right at the beginning of the paragraph. Unless or until, comma. So I was reading that today and Sarah and I were reading it together and, and I, I, I'm not really sure what it means. I'm not sure what it applies. You know what I mean? And if we don't, how can we? It's just not real clear. And Sarah and I were even saying today, like Don said, you shouldn't need a lawyer to understand what your code is really, right? It should be pretty clear. The idea is to make the code better and simpler and clearer and effective for good reasons, right? And if it creates confusion, it's not so good. It's not clear, it's not so good. And we're working on it all the time. And you and Sarah and Dustin and the planning board members have seen this now many times. And, you know, language, to me, that is, I just don't, and I wasn't at the meeting where Marty explained it, but I'm not, you know, unless or until, that has some kind of implication beyond the simplicity of three words, is my guess. There's a stronger something there than just three little words that say unless or until. What is that opening up? What is it restricting?
Right. And, and I'm, you know, I was there and, you know, we had some, some email communication with Dustin and, you know, in the working group. And he even tried to explain it to me and I'm pretty sure I get it, but, but for me, you know, it, it makes more sense without those three words. So, you know, I'm, I'm really want to make sure that, that it is clear and it is understandable. And so, you know, I think maybe town council can help with that.
So is that our task to resend it to town council with the edited language?
Yeah. And I think we can draw it out, maybe just identify exactly what our concern is and what the feedback's been. I can help do that, Sarah.
So from Sarah, Marnie, and Dustin, are you, do you know of a non-lawyer consultant that we could hire to help us?
Maybe.
Yeah, let us think about that.
It would have to be a consultant familiar with town codes, but also familiar with the technology of the lighting, the new lighting world. If there's someone out there like that, we wouldn't have to request permission from the town, from the selectmen. We, we have, if we have the money in our budget, which I believe we do, for a small effort by a consultant, then maybe that's the way to go.
Yeah, it's a good recommendation, Don. We can take that back to the working group and put our heads together.
And if, if you find someone and you feel that that's the way to go, we may not necessarily have to wait until May 12th, our next meeting, May 10th. So if the board feels that we can trust the town planner to manage our budget as she has over the years, and trust Sarah and Marnie in their position to go ahead and do this, then we would, the board could tonight, you know, give them permission to proceed based, based on final approval by the town planner for a dollar amount and a scope, then we wouldn't have to wait until May 10th. So what I'm trying to say is, if we have a motion or we just do a consensus that we give town planner the green light to go ahead and launch on this, if, if all the pieces come together financially, scope wise, and time wise. Yeah, Jesse.
Oh, I was waiting for Andrew. Oh. Does that, does that work for you, Marnie? Okay, so moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion to to give that the green light to the town planner to manage this step has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrelia?
Houlihan, yes.
Okay. Are we still going to send something to Aldo?
I think we should.
Let's do that then. Any objections?
So just to clarify, we have a legal opinion request going to town council with some guidance from the working group as to the specific questions on the Board of Selectmen's proposed language changes. And then we have the working group going to provide feedback on a potential consultant to get a professional services quote or review or, or editing the language in the outdoor illumination if needed to make more sense of the intent. Got it.
And that final, that consultant step is to be managed by you.
Right. Yep. I'll take care of that with the working group.
And if you decide it's not worth it, then that's your decision. Press on without it. Any more discussion on this public hearing item? Anyone from the public?
No, we have six attendees and no one has their hand raised for this agenda item.
Chair, make a motion. We continue the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article. Update section 174-12.1 Outdoor Illumination. Continue to May 10th, 2021 at 7:15 PM.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrelia?
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item in the agenda, which is a continued public hearing. Town meeting warrant article to create section 174-8.4.1 Downtown District. This is continued from February 22nd, March 8th, March 29th, and April 12th. I will go to the town planner on this where she can tell us what recommendation we received from town council.
Okay, so since the last meeting, kind of a lot of things have happened. Most essentially is that the Board of Selectmen met on April 13th and they voted to withdraw this warrant article from this town meeting, annual town meeting 2021, in hopes to pursue it at a special fall town meeting. So we received an email from Lisa Braccio with that information explaining that to us, following that Board of Selectmen's meeting. I also reached out to town administrator Mark Purple today to confirm that the article was withdrawn from the warrant. And he said, yes, it was withdrawn. And it does not appear on the May 22nd, 2021 warrant. Then I also touched base with town council today on some other matters. And I asked him about planning board, you know, proceeding with this public hearing. And he indicated that it that you should probably close the public hearing and then open it fresh once we have a new draft article and start anew, instead of hanging on meeting after meeting, putting it on the agenda, and the public would be following it and nothing would really be going on with it and they'd be wasting their time. So we would re-advertise it when the time comes appropriately as required by state statute.
Very good. Thank you. So the proposed action for us tonight is to close the public hearing. But before we, we'll entertain a motion to do that. Is there any questions or comments from the board or the public?
None for me.
We have six attendees, several of whom have spoke on this matter before, but no one has their hands raised currently.
So Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We close the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article create section 174-8.4.1 Downtown District.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrelia?
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Hopefully that will come back with a new, fresh draft article that we can, I have another public hearing and see where that takes us. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Chestnut Meadow Subdivision Covenant Extension. Karina?
So I see that we have George Connors from Cornerstone Engineering. He's here and he indicated today that he'd be here on behalf of Habitat for Chestnut Meadow Subdivision. As you recall, Chestnut Meadow Subdivision was a subdivision approved back in October 30th of 2017 with a road called Dairy Farm Lane. It was a definitive subdivision and lit approvals. They're currently in the construction phase. The infrastructure and roadway is mostly completed. You might recall that lots one, four, and seven through 12 have been released. That leaves lots two, three, five, six that have not been released from the covenant. Currently, the covenant is set to expire on April 30th, 2021. And George can correct me if I'm wrong. So we received a request from George Gallagher, who is, was with Habitat Communities to extend the existing covenant for an additional two-year period.
Correct.
George?
Morris, how are you?
Welcome back, George. Good to see you.
Be here.
Here on.
Okay, so they have this subdivision. They began construction. The road is a blinder. They have some granite curving in in various locations. And they've got some lots under construction on the right-hand side of the road as you go in. They have a bond posted for somewhere in the vicinity of $411,000. That bond has been renewed for another year. The covenant called for the subdivision to expire, as Karina said. So they're asking for two more years to complete construction. It's typically the way they do things. Most contractors will not put the final coat of pavement on and sidewalks and all the gussing up of the curb and things like that until the very end of the subdivision and all the machines have gone. So this makes sense. Bond is still in place and we respectfully request a extension for two years on the covenant.
Very good. I'll open it up to the board. Any questions or comments? Mr. Mills?
I have no question.
Mr. Stein?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mrs. Latrel.
I'm just looking for some history on this, Mr. Chairman, and how this has usually worked in the past. I know when they originally came before us, they were looking for four years and town council advised against us. And so we compromised at three, I think. So are these covenants historically extended in the past, or is this something different?
A little bit of both, in my opinion. Each is judged on their own merit. And in this case, we have, I think there's two homes that are sold and people are living there. And as George said, the construction of the roadway is as it should be at this point during the, the process of building the houses. So with, with that, that gives the board, I think, a comfort level. And we see homes going up in a slow progression, which I guess under these circumstances, the board would have to take that into account and as far as granting these extensions. So again, you know, these times with the economy, with the, with the pandemic and so on, that it's hard to compare to the way that we manage covenants over the years with subdivisions. And we don't have that many subdivisions at all in town. So I believe that this request is valid. You know, if I think after two years or three years, we saw virtually nothing done or very little, and what, what was done was not good quality, there'd be some concern. But as, again, as George said, there, this is, this is what we would expect to have happen at a quicker pace. But it's all, it all appears to be good. I, I was going to have a question about if the DPW, I know it's still all privately owned, but if the DPW had any concerns either related to this extension or anything else that we might not be aware of. Will you all set, Mrs. Latrel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Karina, do you know anything D P W has? Any problems?
No, um, part of the project was to um I believe if I if I recall correctly, was extend the water line, right? And then uh slightly widen the road over from um zero Chestnut Hill Road to the west. Is it to to North Borough Road or middle North Borough Road, right? Yeah, so um that was all completed successfully, including a culvert. Then um there was something else. Oh, and Fosse and O'Neil has been inspecting the subdivision at the milestones as required up until um February of two thousand twenty, right before the pandemic hit. And we have inspection records that were forwarded to the contractor if there were any concerns. Who would then um respond and remedy those prior to um Fosse and O'Neil going out to the next inspection. So we haven't had any issues that required us to contact the D P W. Everything seems to be running relatively smoothly. So no, I haven't had any feedback from the D P W. But we do contact each other regularly and we see each other in crossings. So if something were to come up, we would mention it.
Thank you. And Mimi, will you all set?
Yes, thank.
Mrs. Holian, questions, comments?
None. Thank you.
So the request is to uh grant the um uh extension to the covenant for from April, no, from what is it, May first, two thousand twenty one to April thirtieth, two thousand twenty three? Is that right, George?
That would be correct.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrelle, yeah.
Who would hand yes?
Anything else, George?
Oh, thank you and good night.
Well, they and we will draft. I believe planning drafts the short notice of the vote that we provide to um George, and I think that has to get recorded.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'll record it once I get it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board, the planner's report.
First thing is, um, I have a question about um annual town meeting and uh how to handle the pre ATM meeting that planning board typically has. I don't recall what happened at the last town meeting that was held outside. I think we just had the regular scheduled planning board meeting. Um, and then when the um annual town meeting happened on Saturday, it was outside and there wasn't another planning board meeting held right before. Are there any any um further guidance for planning on how you like to handle that?
Um, when's the town meeting?
It's May twenty second.
And we meet on May tenth? Is that our last meeting before town meeting?
Yes.
So it would seem that um the only uh well, is the our two articles site plan and the illumination are still being worked on. We'll definitely be discussing those on the tenth. And then I guess maybe wherever we are with those and it and any others, we would decide on the tenth if we were going to meet again before uh the Saturday town meeting or decide to just close, close the hearings and see you outside.
Okay, because the
So I don't know if that's good guidance, but I I think we'll we'll just press on. We know we have time between uh May tenth and the town meeting. So if we have to, we could post another meeting. But keeping in mind that if we don't have to, we won't.
Okay, because you didn't have one before the right before the town meeting in two thousand twenty, I don't believe. I just want to make sure that didn't happen. I don't think we did.
We didn't. You're right.
Yeah, I don't have the old schedule with me. Yeah, okay. All right, so keep moving forward. Um just to make you aware, um three twenty five Turnpike Road, Ken's Foods is currently with the zoning board of appeals for an expansion. I believe I emailed everybody some information about that about a month ago, um, just to start thinking about that. Um, we have a new I T manager. His name is Jason Montijo. He um let's see, he has a lot of experience. He's also been already been extremely helpful. Uh, he comes up from Moon Socket and um already he's helped the planning um on a couple of items. So we're happy that he's there. So welcome, Jason. Um, I sent you, I sent the planning board members um information on a free training webinar, Code of Conduct for Town Boards and Committees, that is happening on May twelve as a workshop. To remind you, um I sent the planning board members on guidance on annual town meeting from Jim Hegarty forwarded that to you. Um, just talking about physical layout of the meeting. Check in on different um kind of administrative guidance. Uh, as far as the mass DOT accelerate bridge replacements, you probably have seen they're well underway. Um, it's not too bad of a traffic stop. They usually get traffic going one each direction. They stop and let you go, but they don't make you sit there for too long. So it's not too bad. The political calendar, um as everybody knows, Mimi is running for um reelection for the planning board. The annual town election is um May eleventh. I'm just letting you know that. And I think that's all we had. Uh, just so you're aware, uh Sarah and I are working on some um inquiries on certain potential infractions that have been brought to our attention. So we're working on those and we'll report back um on anything that's um significant to those. That's it.
Okay, next one. Any questions or comments? Next item is the approval of minutes, March fourth.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the minutes for uh March fourth, two thousand twenty one, which was an exec executive session, I believe, this is for format only. Is that correct, Karina?
That's correct. Format only, not for release.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrelle, yes.
Who would hand yes?
And April sixth?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes from April sixth, two thousand twenty uh one, as written.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrelle, yes.
Who would hand yes?
And April twelfth, meeting minutes.
Mr. Morris, I make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes from April twelfth, two thousand twenty one, as written.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrelle.
Who would hand yes? And Kate for the trifecta.
I'll appropriate for like the Derby Day coming. Next meeting is May tenth, subject to change.
Just want to point out Arbor Day is April thirtieth is Friday and um there are several new trees planted over next to the schoolhouse historic museum uh behind the townhouse. Um, that happened since last fall to now. Um, and even though there weren't any spectacular ceremonies, there's a lot of new trees there and some of they're just in a holding pattern and will be put somewhere else, but some will likely remain there. So if you want to see some nice progress, take a look out back.
Oh, that's great.
Thanks.
I drove by there today and it it is uh they're all starting to uh get leaves. It it's does make quite a difference. Like that was kind of like a moonscape before, so it's really a great improvement.
It's almost a forest now.
Yeah.
And I want to say one thing else. Uh, Kate, thank you so much for keeping up with all the meeting minutes. Um, and you've done a super job for us, so.
Thank you. Happy to do it, guys.
Thank you.
And we're happy to see you, Olivia.
Oh, I know. I was like, well, she's gonna approve all the, she's gonna post all these minutes. Yeah.
She's posting them and very efficient, just like her mom.
I know. I get the emails from her. It's very funny. The whole Battle's family works for the town clerk's office too now.
Good, good thing. Thank you.
Aaron, motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? Last chance.
Uh, we apparently have four attendees. No hands raised.
Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrelle, yes.
Who would hand yes?
Thank you all very much. And and Kate, under ninety minutes.
I know. You know, I love that.